Called the meeting to order at six oh eight P M. And we'll get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Devon for the roll call.
Vice Chair Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
And Commissioner Sarkia. Not present.
Thank you. Do we have any reordering of the agenda today?
Uh, not this evening.
Thank you. Then we will get started with our presentations.
Okay, um, so this evening, we have a special occasion to recognize um, a couple of the, the two outgoing commissioners this evening. Uh, one is present in the audience. Um, but we do have two outgoing commissioners that we would like to recognize and um, present a plaque too. So I just want to start out by saying, you know, I, I've been working in some capacity with Art for some years now, and this current stint on Planning Commission since twenty twenty, and um, it's been a pleasure, and we've enjoyed working with you and all the great work that you've done for the city and, and on the Planning Commission. So um, we appreciate all of your efforts and work and, and review of all the projects that we've brought through. It's, it's been um, a joy to work with you. So um, we wanted to present to you with um, a plaque and in appreciation of your uh, service to the city of Beelton. So.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, and yeah, if you want.
Go for it.
Okay, um, thank you, Andrea. It's, I appreciate this immensely. Been an honor or privilege to uh, have served this current term and sixteen others years here on uh, the Planning Commission and four years on uh, City Council and a short stint on uh, parking wrecks. So I started from the very ground up and worked the way up. So uh, I appreciate it and I uh, really love the time that I've been on here and, and to serve the city and the citizens of Beelton, and uh, I do appreciate this. I also appreciate you and Rose and Irma and the staff uh, over the years and uh, Devon, who took over for uh, for Claire and Claire was here, it was our rock, yeah, over the years, and uh, I really appreciate that, and I appreciate the time that I spent with Shannon, Marcel, unfortunately he's not here tonight, but and uh, uh, so and, and Brian, so. Thank you very much for the recognition.
Great. Thank you, Art. Um, I'd also like to take a moment to thank both of our outgoing commissioners. Um, firstly, Daniel, who um, very much appreciated joining our ranks and filling a, an important vacancy for the last couple of months. And he brought his expertise in project management. Um, the context that he brought from his communications with neighbors was also really helpful to our hearings. So I wanted to thank him for his contributions. And to Art, um, I'm not even sure that we could count your years of involvement with the city and all the time that you've, you've put in and the contributions you've made. Um, you've dedicated a lot of hours to both the council and the commission. And your dedication is admirable, and on a more personal note, um, I wanted to thank you for being so welcoming and collegial. Uh, you and Patty both really set a professional and warm tone on the commission and um, I really enjoyed getting to know you at our conferences together and um, just getting to know you and, and talking about our families together. And yeah, I'll, I'll miss you. Hope you'll be back. Thank you. Um, that brings us.
I was just gonna um, yeah, mention that, you know, unfortunately, thanks, Art. Um, but yeah, since Daniel's not here this evening, we will make sure that he gets his plaque and, and pass that.
Thank you for that. Um, and that moves us to the approval of our minutes, which are from the regular meeting on November first, twenty twenty four. Can we, do we have form to approve those?
Um, yes, so I have spoken with the, the city attorney, and as long as the commissioners have um, reviewed the minutes or the, the meeting audio or um, then they, they would be okay to, this evening.
Great. Thank you. Um, do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
Sure, a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, and um, I'll, I'll second.
Okay, um, motion to approve the minutes of the regular Planning Commission meeting, November twenty first, twenty twenty four. Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Reese.
Aye.
Motion is approved.
Excellent. Um, our election of officers?
Yes, so um, um, so there's two items on this portion of the agenda this evening. One is election of Chair and Vice Chair. Um, and the other is appointments to the Green Team, which would, for the Green Team, that would be two members of the um, Planning Commission. Um, so I will leave it to the Commission to decide how they'd like to uh, determine a Chair and Vice Chair. Um, and we can also table this if, if it is the desire of the Commission to wait until we have a full Commission to appoint to these, we can also continue this to the next meeting if, if that's the desire. So just totally up to the Commission to make that determination at this time.
Okay, yeah, maybe we'll just go through, I'll start with uh, Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Um, do you have any thoughts about how to proceed?
Are the current, the current Chair and Vice Chair are longstanding members of the.
So uh, the current Chair was Art Mercado, um, and so um, and come, come, uh, Vice Chair Reese is, she's currently the Vice Chair, so.
My thoughts are maybe to wait until uh, next uh, until someone is appointed to the Fifth Chair.
Oh, oh, okay, so.
Or.
Um, so what I was actually referring to, so um, so since Commissioner Sarkia is not here this evening, uh, we, you know, we will it's sort of undetermined at this point, how, you know, at what point will we be appointing, or will, will a fifth member be appointed? So I was more referring to uh, um, having the four of you um, available, but again, totally um, your prerogative.
Um, I'm happy to chair the meetings in the interim, if that's helpful. Um.
Chairman Sarkian is new to the council?
Uh, no, he's, he's been on uh, first.
Yes, we'll wait till he gets back, yeah.
Okay, you want to just, yeah.
For interim chair, that sounds good.
Okay, so that's the uh, direction, then we'll just place uh, the election of Chair and Vice Chair on the following Planning Commission meeting.
Um, as for the appointments to the Green Team Committee, we can also wait if you guys would like to, but maybe we should just give a little overview of what that is.
Yes.
And I think Mr. DePazio is probably the best person to do that.
Uh, so the Green Team, it's a uh, it's a citizen-led uh, group that meets every two months over Zoom. Um, and it's, it's sort of intended to be city facilitated, but citizen-led to discuss environmental initiatives or um, really what, what the citizens want to, want to discuss. Um, so to give you an example of things in Rob in the past, um, electric vehicle subsidies or um, uh, an open streets event, uh, that was sort of a quasi Earth Day celebration. Um, you know, uh, Vice Chair Reese has been wonderful on the uh, on the Green Team, especially because when citizens have questions about, say, the County Planning Commission, she knows all about that. Um, but um, I, I usually uh, emcee those meetings for lack of a better term, um, the agenda. Um, and um, yeah, it's a, it's a wonderful group. It's sort of in a, in a it's in a space where um, it's really the city. It's uh, we want it to be citizen-led, but city-driven, and so your participation there really, uh, it's a great way for citizens who are on there to, if they want to bring something before the Planning Commission, like, you're there and you can just, you know, you can say, okay, I'll, I'll bring this up, I'll take this into consideration.
And they're, they're normally on the first Thursday of.
Yes, they're on the uh, they're on the second Thursday of the.
Of every other month.
Every other month.
We just had one, so it's odd months, right? Yes.
Um, they, they are during the work day, they're from three to five typically.
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, um, previously Commissioner Sarkia had not expressed interest in serving, but we can wait to do the appointments if you guys would like, but maybe if you could just express whether you're interested or not for the time being. Um, or able to even participate.
I'm able to. It might be a little tough for me for work, it's three to five. I can, if you didn't, it sounds like a good idea.
Yeah.
You get involved in with the community and stuff, people. Yeah, that's cool.
I've served on it for two years, and I do have difficulty making some of the meetings since I have work meetings and can't get out sometimes, but um, I would be willing to serve on that committee again if there weren't other people who were excited about participating. Um.
So do we want to uh, table it, or do we want to uh, make a decision today? So there are two, you know, we have two, the ability for two Planning Commissioners to be on the Green Team.
That's fine. I know, I, I know that um, Commissioner Sarkia wasn't interested last time around, so um, perhaps we make a motion for that. For um, for Commissioner Campbell and myself.
Uh, sure, if, yeah, absolutely, if that's, if the direction.
Okay, sure, great. Um, I'll make the motion for um, Commissioner Campbell and Vice Chair Reese to um, participate on the Green Team Committee as the Planning Commission appointees.
I'll second the motion.
Uh, for the uh, to appoint um, Vice Chair Reese and Commissioner Campbell to the Green Team. Uh, Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Vice Chair Reese.
Aye.
Motion passes the reader.
Great. And we've come to the point in our agenda, um, where we welcome members of the audience to address the Planning Commission on um, items that are not on the agenda today. Uh, and if you have a comment, um, this is the time to do so. No action is taken on the items at this meeting, and um, please state your name and address for the record. And the comments are limited to three minutes.
Okay. Uh, the first speaker, uh, speaker slip I received from Teresa Riley.
Good evening, everybody. First time at a planning mission meeting, so um, I am Teresa Riley. I live in the Ranch Club Estates, just down the street. I'm on the Green Team when I can get to those meetings. Um, as well as the Arts and Culture Committee, and then I'm also on a board member of WeWatch, so I'm not here and representing WeWatch, but I will be bringing information back to our board. Um, and the reason I came tonight is because there's an awful lot of um, concern with upcoming building projects in Beelton. And so rather than grab a batter next door, I thought I would come and talk to the Planning Commission and hope that we can get some of these things more in line with um, blending in with Beelton before they get to City Council. So that's what my comments are regarding. So one of the main concerns i- of the fellow residents and of myself is the um, the density and the height of the projects such as the three seventy-six Avenue of the Flags and mixed use, that's the Anderson's P-Soup. Uh, the five eighteen Avenue of the Flags, which is right up the street from them, as well as the highway two forty-six Commercial Center with the coffee pot drive-through.
Hmm.
So the height of four stories and the density are out of character for Beelton. I understand that these are areas and needing, we can need a modernization, but four stories is much too high. A lot of the other elements on the street are two-story or three-story elements. And I don't think any of this on Avenue of the Flags should be one of three stories, and there need to be greater setbacks from the street. Um, I envision a place where the locals can come walk down the street. It needs to be pedestrian-friendly with landscaping, places to sit and chat and uh, young families to push their strollers, et cetera. That is not the way it looks like it's going to work with what's being proposed. Um. And then the idea of a thirty-foot tall coffee pot, I understand some people think that's cute, but for the most part, people do not appreciate the design element of that. It seems rather out of place, um, maybe belong somewhere. Um, the other area of concern are the impacts on traffic in two forty-six. Um, in addition to the influx of cars for residents, business owners and customers, while of these new, new buildings, the drive-through proposed for the Commercial Center promises to be a traffic nightmare. Um, cars turning into the drive-through are likely to back traffic up. So I bring to mind what happened on Upper State Street, Chick-Pulley. And so they, the traffic, people trying to turn into the drive-through were backed up onto the main streets, and that's already a hideously crowded um, block of traffic between uh, Avenue of the Flags and the one oh one. Um, and then exiting, picture ex- exiting, you've got um, gas stations on both sides of the street, we've got people turning right, turning left in a block that's usually stopped waiting for traffic signals to change. Um. And then I also think about the danger. Um, it's going to be a lot like between the Starbucks and the Anderson Shopping Center, which is rather a gauntlet right now. Again, very dangerous, people turning left and right in front of, behind each other across travel. Um, and then finally, the, the design elements, I understand that you have adopted the art deco look, which can be done tastefully, but because we're here and we are not downtown L.A., we really need to think about how do you blend that with this ranch rural style that is already existing, not to mention the Anderson Hotel, which is going to remain functional next door. So um, those are all things that the community is looking at, WeWatch is looking at. Um, and a lot, most of what I'm seeing is complaints along those lines, so I just want to bring it to your attention and hope to be constructive in steering that into something that we can all.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Uh, we welcome you to stay for the um, project status update later on our agenda as well, and um, Andrea, uh, could you, do you have any status updates about when we'll first see the project at the Anderson P-Soup site? We haven't seen.
So, yeah, so that project has been submitted for conceptual review, um, but just given the timing of the submitted with the new year and holidays and things like that, it has not been agendized yet. But um, I don't have an exact date uh, when that will come through, but it will come through um, in the next couple of months is the anticipated timeframe.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. DePazio, do we have any further comments?
Uh, yes, the second slip I received was from Chase Sanders.
So what exactly is the scope of the commission? Like, what can I, not? Like, what, what's useless, I mean, that's.
So as a member of the public, you can bring any concerns, complaints, um, positives um, and in addressing the, the Planning Commission, um, but it's not meant to be a back and forth, just providing your comments.
I was just kind of asking, like, how is it different from, like, City Council meeting?
Uh, in terms of the, the process of.
What I can comment on.
Oh, um, the same.
Okay.
Yeah, in, in terms of public.
Public stuff.
Hmm.
Um, well, at the last City Council meeting, I spoke about uh, just like trash and stuff on the sidewalk and um, um, other things, uh, but I've had like a lot of other concerns too, um, mostly about like the economy. Um, I feel like the land, it's starting to develop like a lot more. Um, people are building things, and I'd just like to see more being done, um, to develop and. Um. Yeah, um. I didn't really come with anything specific to speak about, but, uh, what was she mentioning about the coffee pot? What did that? Oh, sorry, we said the right word.
Yeah, you're welcome to come in and um, take a look at the plans.
Okay, um, yeah, I, could, could you guys like make it more public, maybe, like the plans and.
Uh, we have an engage page on our website, and uh, yeah, that's specifically the Highway two forty-six.
Okay.
But yeah, oh, come on in, we'll, we'll show it to you.
I would definitely like to. Um, yeah, uh, I, I really just like generally wanted to talk about the city, like, as a whole, like the public infrastructure is just very like, it just seems very unclear. Like, I'm starting to see more stuff, but um, yeah, a lot of it is business as well, you know, I think the business is our community too. So I'm happy to see like a lot of the businesses and private property get developed, but um, yeah, last time I was talking about just basically the land itself, I just think that there needs to be more pressure to like, do something with it. Um, yeah.
Thank you. Um, I will add at this point that um, at the Green Team meeting, it was discussed that uh, some volunteer opportunities for public cleanup, um, especially near the community garden, so yeah, we would welcome you to join us there. Okay, is that conclude our public comment?
Anything on the Zoom, Rose?
Nothing yet.
Okay.
Great, um, that will move us through to other business.
Yes, absolutely. So um, this evening, so um, our Vice Chair Reese um, has participated in this um, before, but typically the first meeting of the year, what I like to do is just do a really quick rundown, high-level um, overview of the project, the um, current projects we're working on, so the development projects that are happening um, throughout the community. Um, and they're the different phases they're in, as well as talk about any long-range planning efforts that we are also working on, so. Um, and this is meant to be a back and forth, so, you know, I'll just kind of point out some of the main things. I won't go through every project. Um, you guys all have your, you know, list in front of you, and what you have in front of you is actually what we post on the Planning Department page. So I'll just use it as my guide. Um, I'm not going to talk about every project, but if you do have a specific question about a specific project, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. So um, I'll just uh, get started, so just um, this was actually brought up just a minute ago, but um, yeah, the old P-Soup Anderson site, um, we do have concept plans for that project. They are up on the Beelton Engage page, um, and available for the public to review. And we do anticipate um, bringing those concept plans uh, before the Planning Commission and City Council in the coming couple of months, so. Um, again, actually also Highway two forty-six was one I was going to highlight, so um, uh, it was mentioned in one of the public comments um, regarding the coffee pot, that, the Highway two forty-six commercial project um, has been submitted. We are um, currently, um, you know, it's going through a plan check, um, on, plan, plan review, I should say, um, um, prior to bringing it for public hearings. And I will note that we are um, um, working through the scope of the traffic study, and one of the comments was, um, you know, of concerns with traffic. We will be conducting a traffic study for this project, so I'm taking into consideration all of the Highway two forty-six drive-through considerations, et cetera, so. Um, another exciting one coming up here is in the next month or so, we do plan to bring um, the Arco AMPM gas station um, uh, forward for public hearing, uh, date, exact date to be determined, but um, that should be coming, that's um, located at the north end of the avenue, so where the uh, uh, the business with the, the trailers, yes, yeah. Yeah, the trailers that are parked there up on the north end of the avenue, it's that property, so.
Just keep it real quick.
Sure.
On um, item C, the, the Highway two forty-six Commercial Center, could you just give like a real quick summary of, of the, the drive-through and how that's a special request that the council.
Absolutely, yeah. So the drive-through component of the Highway two forty-six Commercial um, Center project um, would require a specific plan amendment, because currently as the specific plan is written, um, it does not allow drive-throughs. So um, that, that is part of the application that um, is going to be, is being processed and will be brought forward to the Planning Commission. So it is a special consideration um, beyond just your typical final development plan process that we go through here typically, so.
Thank you.
Um, let's see, I'm going to highlight a couple here. So on this list, this list is from the middle of December, so we're getting ready to update it, our, our monthly update here in a couple of days. Um, so there are some items on here that um, are no longer in process, so um, the Pacific Flips Gymnastics Studio is no longer, they've withdrawn that application, so that's no longer um, going to happen. Um, but the hotel project, so the Home Two Suites and Hyatt Place project, that's in the Village Pacific Plan area um, near the, near the Polo Village, uh, Village um, Park and the Town Homes. Uh, that is, we're getting really close to building permits on that, there's just a few items, so I, I, you know, I'm not exactly sure the timeline is up to the the property owner and the applicant on that, but um, it's pretty close, at least from our end, so. I'm getting there. Let's see. Um, also, just of note, there are a couple, again, as I mentioned, projects that have since expired also on this list that we will update, but uh, so for instance, the Waypoint Bowling Alley project has expired, as well as the Station, the B U E five, the Station or the Network project. Um, so we'll be taking those off the list, but um, they are still on, on this one, so just wanted to point that out. And then under construction, we've got, if you, you probably noticed, we've got um, three um, multifamily um, housing projects under construction uh, along McMurray Road, um, which would be the Village Senior Apartments, so that's um, fifty affordable um, senior apartments um, located just north of the Village Park. And then the Polo Village, which almost looks complete, but they're doing a lot of interior work right now, and that's the one that's just north of the Town Homes. Um, and then additionally, on the last page here, the Beelton Garden Apartments, that's at the south end of McMurray Road. And that's eighty-nine um, affordable multifamily residential units, so lots of construction going on right now, all kind of along that McMurray Road corridor, um, so uh, but Polo Village does seem to be getting really close uh, to being done, so that's exciting. So I, um, that's what's on the current project list. Um, so if you have any questions on that, I'm happy to take them now, or I can just, I have a cup, just a brief couple of items in terms of what we're working on long-range wise this year, so. Um, comprehend, the, the main one we're working on in terms of long range is we are working on a comprehensive update to the Beelton General Plan, so that, it's been almost twenty years since we've um, done that, so that's, that's like the biggest long-range planning effort that, you know, we can do, so I'm excited to bring that forward in different phases to the Planning Commission in the coming couple of years. Um, so that's about, it'll be about a two-year process here, so um, that's, that's a big one, and uh, we are also um, in the next day or two, working day or two, going to be getting um, all of the website content put on, we're going to send out a survey to the public, just the initial survey about the gen, you know, what, you know, certain aspects of the general plan and asking questions of the public. So that will um, come out, uh, it will also be in the Beelton Buzz, that's the idea, so the next upcoming Beelton Buzz, it'll get sent out uh, via Q R code link, um, and the uh, residents will also have the opportunity to submit a hard copy um, form, if they'd like to, they can come and pick it up at the Planning Department and, and fill it out there. So, yeah, really exciting um, process that we're beginning to embark on, and the Planning Commission will be involved in that throughout the process, so um, that's exciting. And another um, project we are working on is we are getting close to bringing back the Median three concept plan, so we've brought that through the process um, and gotten comments from Planning Commission City Council, and now we are um, looking to bring that back in response to those comments, um, hoping that we will um, move forward hopefully with some version of concept plans for Median three, so.
Median three is the one that's primarily lawn next to the parking lot on Avenue of the Flags.
Yeah, so just south of the new parking lot, yeah, but where they, where Fall Fest, essentially, the center of Fall Fest happened.
Hmm, we looked at some concept plans that had a small museum and some nice walking paths, and it's really nicely landscaped and also had a little mini amphitheater for.
Yeah, and, and.
Rows of seating.
Um, we, those should be up on the Beelton Engage page also, um, and you're, you're welcome to email me, call me, come in and, and take a look if you're interested um, in taking a look in more detail at what those look like in advance of the next time we bring it to you, so. Uh, and I was going to just mention that we should be bringing that in the next uh, month or two to the Planning Commission for that, uh, you know, additional review after we've um, hopefully responded to the comments that were received, so. Um, and lastly, in terms of long range of note, uh, we are working through several zoning ordinance amendments that are housing element-related, so we did adopt our housing element a little over a year ago now. And um, we are working through the zoning ordinance amendments that are related to that. Uh, also, um, working on the A D U ordinance, or basically a response to H C D's comments on our A D, A D U ordinance and um, plan to bring that back here shortly also. So we've got, you know, quite a, quite a bit of, you know, long, mix of long-range and current planning projects in different phases, um, and again, I'm happy to meet with any commissioner at any time, one-on-one, to chat through any details of any projects or all, um, if you, if you're interested, so.
Great, just throwing that out. Do we have any questions? Do you have any questions?
Multiple. No, thank you.
I have a quick question about five eighteen, so there was that, the modification, um. Forget exactly what they were modifying, but we approved and made a recommendation on the development plan amendment, it looks like that got approved by city council. Okay. All right, that was the only question I had. Great, so that moves us into written communications.
None this evening?
None this evening, okay. Uh, planning commissioner comments, um, I have one, but I'll open it up in case.
No comments this week.
Okay, um, I'm not sure how many slots we had signed up at the planning commissioner conference.
Mm-hmm, um, that was actually, well, I don't, uh, yeah, yeah, on my planning uh director's report, but um, yeah, I'll address, I'll address that.
Great, and then um, I mentioned this briefly, but I, I think there is going to be some communications sent out to Beelton residents about a. Cleanup effort, um, I think we're looking at two weekends?
Yes, um, I talked to Annie Kudis today, um, she. Didn't have any weekends for me, but she was going to get some possible weekends back to me where she could coordinate and uh hopefully coordinate with um. Let's see, so I have just to help out and get a little public cleanup scheduled.
Great, thank you. And then to uh the planning director report.
Sure, um, I just wanted to start off by welcoming our two new commissioners, uh Commissioner Camp and Commissioner Campbell. Um, yeah, it should be an exciting year and looking forward to working with you both and you all, um, on a lot of the exciting stuff we do here in Beelton. So again, um, call me, email me, come in, chat anytime, I'm happy, happy to do that, so, welcome. Um, I was going to also mention as part of this, uh, which Vice Chair Reese started mentioning was, um, there is a. Planning Commissioners Academy coming up, it's an annual conference that occurs in different parts of the state. Um, that basically is tailored to planning commissioners with a lot of different sessions on what it is to be a planning commissioner, specific topics of interest. That are kind of hot, you know, hot topics in the planning world, um, and it's been, I've been to it a couple times, it's really a, a fun conference. And you get to um, hang out with your fellow commissioners and learn a lot, so um, that is coming up. Um, Mar- March fifth through the seventh, which is a Wednesday through a Friday, it's in Santa Rosa uh this year. Um, and so if you would like additional information on that, or if you'd like to uh sign up for it, just contact uh Devon here. And he'll get you a registered hotel um conference, et cetera, so. Um, I will note also that at that conference, they do offer uh the harassment and the, the, both of the trainings that you're required to take. Yeah, um, so it is kind of a nice opportunity to uh, to um. You, to, to be exposed to that, and also to just satisfy your requirement to co- um, complete those trainings, so. Um, any additional information or to sign up, just uh reach out to Devon and he can do that for you. Um, and to your point, Vice Chair Reese, uh, we don't, there's no, not necessarily a number of slots we have as a city to attend the conference. It's just a matter of if registration is still open, which it is, um, and whether or not, you know, there's hotels and enough registration there, so. We'll check on that, but um, if, if interested, I'd say um let Devon know sooner rather than later, so that hotels don't fill up and, you know, registration is still available for the conference. So.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I wasn't sure if we'd already signed anyone up, that's what I was.
Um, I believe we do have.
Yes, um, Commissioner Sarkia is, uh, you're scheduled to go to the planning commissioners' conference.
Yes.
Yes. I'm not late for that, too. Apologize.
No worries.
Okay, um, and um, I was just lastly um, going to say that, um, you know. Again, reach out if you have any questions, and I know Devon and I, between the two of us, will be providing you some additional information as a new commissioner. Just so you have it available to you over the next week or so, so look out for that. Um, and yeah, and any questions you have at any time, please feel free to come into the planning department and check in. Um, other than that, I do know that, and Rose, you might be able to correct me if I'm wrong on this, but in terms of um, the library opening, it is anticipated. We don't have a specific date at this point, but sometime in February is the goal, okay, so just wanted to let the commission know that that's. And, you know, the estimated open date for the library, so that's exciting also.
Thank you.
Anyway, that's it.
And I would, I would definitely recommend the planning commissioner conference to get overview on housing bills and CECL and all sorts of good stuff, so. Um. That's my two cents, and um with that, I think we are ready to adjourn the meeting at six forty-two.